We can start with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Fierstos.
Here.
Mr. Penrod.
Here.
Here. Roers here. Ms. Tobias.
Here.
And Mr. Estaset. And Mr. Raymer are gone, and I'm here, Randy, so we've got five. No additions, deletions, hearing of patrons. Anybody have anything to talk about tonight? No hearing of patrons, presentations and recognitions.
Yep, so I'd like to invite Carol Collett, Mrs. Collett up, and her guest, our guest, our one-year guest.
You too, Bill. I was hoping Bill was gonna speak tonight.
I can have him come on up. Okay, so we, the exchange students are very grateful to be at Manchester High School. As a matter of fact, we have started to have students at Manchester High School of people that came here and then wanted their children to come. The Crum family, a couple of years ago, had a daughter of their host brother. And we have had siblings of students that we've had. So Manchester's been a very great place to have students and a place where they're very happy. So they wanna do a little presentation for you tonight.
First of all, hello. So we're Lena, Anna, and Romi, who couldn't be here 'cause she's sick right now, and I'm Gina. So right now, we're gonna explain the American high school versus our European high schools.
Okay, hi, my name is Anna. I'm gonna say some facts about Norway. The capital is Oslo, and the size is 150,000 square miles, and the population is about 5.5 million.
Yeah, I'm Liné, I'm from Germany, obviously. Yeah, Germany's capital is Berlin. Its size is 138,000 square miles, and its population is about 83 million.
This is Romi's park, she's not here currently. So, well, Tudalen, the capital is Spur, the size is 50,941 miles square, and the population is 9,034 million people. Spain, its capital, its Madrid, the size, it's 195,360 miles square, and the population is 48,000, no, 48.91 million people.
Okay, so now I'm gonna talk about the school system in Norway. We have kindergarten, that's age 1 to 5. And then you have elementary school, that's first grade to seventh grade. And then you have secondary school, that's eighth grade to 10th grade. And then we have high school, that's 11th grade to 13th grade. And then we have university after high school. Yeah, the German school system is kinda similar. You don't have to attend to kindergarten, but I feel like it's common for kids to go to kindergarten. You start at the age of two and go till you're six years old. From the age of six, you go to elementary school, it's also from first to fourth grade. And then secondary school, you have like three options. The such-called Hauptschule is required, that means you only have to do like nine years of school in total. But that's also like the lowest level of education. Then you have the Realschule, it's, yeah, one more year you have to attend, that's like the most common diploma in Germany. So I feel today that's the option that most teenagers choose because it's like 10 years you have like an acceptable graduate, yeah, your acceptable graduation. And the highest education level is the, yeah, we call it gymnasium. You have to attend either 12 or 13 years of school, depends on the state. Yeah, and then you get the Abitur, and this is the only option that you can attend a university with. Well, this is the school system in Switzerland. I would say it's pretty, that's pretty much the same as in Germany. You also have different choices of secondary school, just, yeah, no, basically, it's pretty much the same.
The school system in Spain, it's infinite education, you go till you're, well, when you're born, till you're six years old. Then primary school, it's from when you're six years old to 12 years old. Then secondary school, it's from 12 years to 16 years old. Then you have, after mandatory school, we have two options, that is called Batirado, that is two years leading to university entrance. Then vocational training, that we call it FFA, that is also two years, and you can still apply to university after that, and then you can go to university or just start working.
Okay, so now I'm gonna talk about the classes in Norway compared to the classes in the US. In the US, you have the same schedule every day, but in Norway, we have different schedules every day, and it's usually two, three-hour classes every day. In the US, you can create your own schedule, but in Norway, you cannot do that. In the US, we have homework, but in Norway, we do not have homework, we just have really big assignments that we have to do. In the US, there's a lot of fun school activities, like the football games on Fridays, but in Norway, we don't really have that, it's like outside of school. And in the US, there is like delays due to snow or bad weather, but it's, in Norway, we don't have delays, no matter what.
Yeah, the classes in Germany also are a little bit different than here in the US. First of all, one good thing, actually, we don't have afternoon classes at all, so our school days usually end at 1:00, which is, well, relaxing sometimes. But, and we also get like several breaks throughout the day, that means we have like a morning break, which is 40 minutes actually, where we can eat breakfast or do whatever. Unfortunately, we do have a lot more classes, and they're also like only required classes, and they're a lot less fun than here. That means we get like a schedule which we have no like opportunity to change or choose or whatever. Yeah, we are able to go here by the yellow school buses. On Germany, you either have to take public transportation or ride your bike to school. Yeah, we also get no delayed due to any weather, that means sometimes it was really nice just waking up and being like, "Yeah, I can go back to sleep for another hour." At Germany, they just send us to school no matter what, whether it's snowing, whether it's raining. And we also have like a lot bigger exams, like we don't have like this small quizzes or tests with a lot like, just check true or false, which makes it kind of hard to like prepare for these exams because you have to write a lot more issue. And also, what I experienced, like the relationships of the teachers are like a lot more like friendly. In Germany, you could never imagine that, it's like a way more distant relationship. And what I noticed, what I really like about like the American high schools, is you have like classes with different people every day. In Germany, you like stay in the same classes and go like throughout the day with a whole like 30 people, which I really enjoy seeing like different people throughout the day, because I'm not saying it gets boring, but at some point, you're just done with seeing the same people through every single day.
Well, the classes in Switzerland are mostly like the ones in Germany. So in, here in the US, you don't have breaks, or just a short one for lunch. And in Switzerland, you have break after three classes, an hour and a half lunch. In the US, it's less subject, but the student chooses them, and in Switzerland, at least 15 classes and additional classes, if you wanna take them. The yellow school buses, cars that you're riding here, we, well, in Switzerland, they use train and trains, buses, walking, or auto cars. In Switzerland, there's no delay for bad weather, when in the US, it is. In Switzerland, there's two-hour exams with open questions, when in the US, quizzes are, well, small tests with a lot of truth and false. And in the US, teachers are like more like friendly, but in Switzerland, it's more like personal or distance with the teachers. In Spain, we have two breaks, one for breakfast and one for lunch, when in the US, well, you only have one short, and it's for lunch. In Spain, every year, you have like the same subjects, and the student doesn't like choose most of them. Then you have an elective class, and the subject depends on the school. In Spain, we ride the public transportation, we usually walk, or sometimes our parents bring us there when we're little. In Spain, there's no bad weather sometimes, so there's no delays for that. And in Spain, we have very big tests and a lot of memorization for those. And in Spain, some teachers are like very friendly and others kind of strict, but they mostly maintain the distance.
Okay, so now we're gonna talk about lunch in Norway, like the school lunches. We have free breakfast every morning, but lunch costs money. For breakfast, it's usually like bread or crackers with toppings, porridge or pancakes. Lunch is a lot of different things, it's usually like pasta, pizza, or salads.
Yeah, lunch in Germany, so due to the fact that we don't really have afternoon classes, there's barely any like lunch opportunities, but sometimes we do have afternoon classes, like maybe every two weeks. Yeah, but then our lunch is pretty boring, honestly, we just get like a main dish with a salad and a dessert. But there's always a vegetarian or vegan option. But most of the students just go to like the closest like supermarket or food store to get like something really enjoyable to eat. But like my school has a cafeteria, you can like go to during like your breaks and just get like your breakfast there, so I think most schools in Germany do have a cafeteria. Yeah, in Switzerland, it's actually pretty much the same, actually, it's exactly the same, so yeah.
And in Spain, they want healthy lunches, they have a lot of parent meetings to make it healthy. Here, it's healthy, but not as healthy, so we have two dishes, we have water, we're gonna have another drink, only water, and there's always a dessert, and it's always healthy dessert.
Okay, so school sports in Norway, not every school have a sport. You pick one sport, and then you play the same sport the whole year. My school has track and soccer. We don't have games, we just have regionals and region championship. And we have practice two to three times a week.
Unfortunately, school sports in Germany are like not a thing at all. That means we have, besides PE classes, which are required, we have no opportunity to play like a sport in school. But, I mean, we don't have afternoon classes, so most kids have time to like go play a sport in a club after school. So we spend like our afternoon basically playing a sport like two to four times a week. Yeah, in Switzerland, normally, schools also don't offer any sports besides one PE classes, so that's why most students in Switzerland go play a sport in a club, too.
In Spain, we don't have sport clubs, we, some schools have soccer teams, and some schools have other sport teams, and other people play sports in outside activities, and there's only two, three trainings a week, and here, there's five trainings a week, so there's a lot of differences.
The school size in Norway, it's normally 600 students per school, and the average is 28 students per class. And this is my school in Norway.
A school in Germany has usually around 500 to 2,000 students, which an average of 24 students per class, and like about three to five classes per grade. The top right picture, actually, I think it's our lowest grades, that means grades five and six. And then the other bottom pictures, class photo of my sister's class, actually, and on the bottom, you can see like my whole school building.
School size in Switzerland, it's normally 700 students, an average 20 students per class.
In Spain, it's usually 90 each per grade and three classes of 30 grades per class. And the free time, in Europe, there's a lot of free time during the week, we only do things on weekends, and there's more family activities, and stores are closed on Sundays. But in the USA, we practice every day, there's more sport events, and stores are open every day.
Some things that we love about American high school, the school spirit, games and pep rallies, homecoming and prom, fun classes, a lot of fun activities, and graduation.
Yeah, we just wanna say thank you for allowing us to attend North Manchester High School. I think I can speak for all of us that we really like enjoy making all this experience here, not only in the school, but in this town. So yeah, we appreciate you, thank you for listening to us today.
Do you have any questions, or?
You didn't mention, is your school year round, do you have a summer break, winter break, things like that?
Oh, yeah, no, we, of course, we have, I think we even have like more school breaks, actually, like I can talk for Germany. And we have Easter break about two weeks, our summer break is only six weeks. Our fall break is two weeks again, and our winter break is two to three weeks. And then we have during our semester, we have also like four to five days off.
In Spain, we have a lot of more school breaks, the summer is like 10 weeks long, so a lot of breaks.
You mentioned a lot of things that you like about school here. What's one thing you don't care for that you like better where you go to school over there?
I think the time, it starts at too soon in Spain.
No, I just wanna say thank you for being brave and coming over to the United States and going to school here, right, and having that courage to like come to a foreign country, you know, you all speak pretty good English, a lot better than I do in your country, right, so we appreciate you.
Should they tell you their ages?
Sure.
How old are you all?
I'm 17.
I'm 16.
I'm 15.
I'm 15.
She turned 15 in July. So.
Pretty good.
Two of them are very young.
So how many, how many years, when you return, how many more years of school do you have to complete?
I have one year left of high school, and then I can choose what I wanna do after that, yeah.
Because I'm only staying for the semester, I don't have to retake my school year back home, so I have, well, two and a half years left, because my state chose to make us do 13 years of high school. But I also already know what I wanna study after, so I mean, it's predictable.
I only have two years left, and then going to university.
I have two years left, as you know.
Yeah, you mentioned graduation, so here, we usually have a little, you know, sort of an honor walk for the foreign exchange students. What's that mean to you guys to be able to do that? You haven't did it yet, but.
Do you wanna wear the captain gown?
Yeah, I think that is like a great experience, having a graduation here at the US, it's really fun. In Spain, we have graduations, but not like that, here, they're like very fun.
All right, thank you.
Although I'm probably won't be here for graduation, well, not probably, but definitely, I think it's just one big dream of every student coming to the US. I mean, it's one of the cliches you always see, like in the movies, like people with the cap and the gown, just, and you imagine yourself when you're coming here, like I think it's a big dream of like everyone coming here.
The lockers, the leather jacket, it's high school music.
High school music.
Yeah, I don't, thank you.
Real quick, I'd just like to say thank you to all the families listed, and all the families in the past that have welcomed students into their homes, but most importantly, thank you to the Collett family who championed this program. Yeah, it's just a really cool thing that the school does, so thank you.
You know, you see, I saw something on the internet the other day with Sam, you know, or Max Carter, and, you know, just the, it's kinda funny to see the relations, the lasting relationships that come out of this foreign exchange program. I know COVID kinda put a hit on it, right, but it looks like we appreciate you.
Do you know, Ms. Collett, you know, since you've taken over, how many students have come to Manchester? Do you have a estimate?
I mean, these two of ours are 38 and 39, and that's just us, so.
Wow.
That would be, I could look it up, and it's a lot.
It'd be interesting, yeah.
Yeah, there've been years where we've had 10 or 11 of them, they're, Lena has to leave in January, but we have five more coming then, so it'll be a pretty big number. It's 63,000 of our budget this year, so, you know, because they're.
It's a financial contribution, absolutely, so.
That's awesome.
And we appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
There's little comparisons, it's kind of, there is some. What is that, 180 grand or? Yeah. Well, the signatures won't come back to.
Financial report. Dr. Stevens.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, go home and study.
Dr. Stevens.
Good evening. And I don't take it personal at all, everybody just left.
We're just as excited, trust me.
Just the red one, right?
So, Operation Fund, both funds were in good shape for this month. So as you can see, cash flow, we're anticipating about 200,000, actual expenses are 182. Breaking down into the monthly expenses, we're positive in salaries, I'm sorry, negative salaries, negative benefits, but positive in claims overall for the month, we ended at plus 18 compared to our projections. So good month in operations, and then going on to education. This is a little strange, I'll point that out. So again, when you look at total revenue, we're projecting 941,000 coming in, we actually received 956. So total expenses, we're looking at projected total cash of ending, projected 117, we actually ended at 194, so we're plus 76, almost 77,000 in education on the cash flow. And that all comes down to the monthly expenses, you'll see on claims, we had a negative 148 last month. They said there were a couple of things that we had claimed that came out of, that should've come out of the bond, that did not. We had our software management team come in, that we use the software, they made some other corrections while they were here, that's why we had a negative 148 for the month in claims. So that was a rewrite for claims going back to July. So anyway, end of the month, positive at 76,000. Now, one of the things I wanted to just point out, this will be your last normal report until March. And the reason for that is, one of the things I'll be doing tonight, I hope, is ratifying the negotiated agreement. We will have back pay coming in through that for, since the second pay in August, so we'll catch everybody up, and then that, from that point forward, we'll have a normal salary schedule. But that, that monthly will show up, will make the payment in November, will show up in your December report. Your December report will have back pay for non-certified administrators, and December is also when the state takes the ADM count and makes the corrections. So we're 20 students, estimated 20 students over what we actually ended up enrolling, so they'll make that correction. So your December report will show up in January, which means your January report will look odd because of the corrections. Your January month is a three-pay month, so that will show up in your February report. Your February will be a normal month, which you'll see until March. So we're a ways out from getting another standard report because of all the changes. The other thing I just point out, in your, Mike has seen it and is passing around, one of the things I talked about during the budget cycle is, this is the first year that we did a tax anticipation warrant through the Indiana Bond Bank, that is embedded in our budget for '26, and the paperwork to process that application is in tonight. I cannot tell you exactly what the rate is, and I cannot tell you the amount until we get our budget order, which will be sometime in December. Once we have that, Bond Bank goes in, does the calculations, there's a certain percentage you can take from your operation fund, from your levy, which is like 90%. So they'll run all those numbers, we don't get that back until probably end of December, early January. So I can't really tell you what the rate is, other than if you've been following the feds, the overall rate has dropped a little bit, quarter basis point, that'll have some impact, they're talking about maybe another drop yet this year, so it'll have some impact, not huge. But usually, the Bond Bank is 3.5 to 4%, somewhere around there. And we make it up on what the money we get in, in January, we deposit for the year, so we make up interest on that side. Again, that's part of your budget process, and this is just simply the paperwork to get it signed, and Mike will have writer's tram before he gets done. Any questions?
No. Any questions? Thank you. See consent items, claims, minutes, you guys looked through the claims. Minutes are correct, resignations.
Two resignations, Adam Arla as varsity volleyball coach, and Pat Lupper as PE health teacher effective at the end of the first semester.
Okay, grants.
Grants, two grants, one for $3,500. The grant was written by Mr. Eichenhauer, Ms. Janegy. Ms. Janegy provides funds for additional plantings, upgrades to raised bed gardens, a watering system and educational components that will enhance the outdoor learning lab. That's from Whole Kids Garden Foundation Grant. And a $5,000 to support our classroom, Strauss, from Strauss Family Charitable Endowment, and the Thomas Earl Education Endowment, so grants totaling $8,500.
Nice, thank you to the grant provider. Donations.
All of these donations are for Manchester Junior Senior High School, 1,250 for the FFA. Um, one thousand two hundred and fifty for the FFA program from the ZOTUS on behalf of Manchester Veterinarian Clinic. Five hundred for the football program from Crossroads Bank. Five hundred for the MXC Dick Miller Pavilion from Lake City Honda Kawasaki. Two hundred and fifty dollars for the MXC Dick Miller Pavilion from Montgomery Patterson. Five hundred to the football program from IDS LLC. One thousand to the athletic department from Larry Radke. Thousand dollars to the FFA program from an anonymous donor. Fifty dollars to the girls' basketball program from Joel and Gay Gertie. And two hundred dollars to the APES physics trip from an anonymous donor. Totalling five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Thank you.
Thank you very much, community. Any facility rentals?
Well, there is one facility rental request, um, so reoccurring requests that we get from Tri-Cappa to utilize the kitchen for their cheese ball, uh, sales fundraiser.
And we thank you.
Yeah, cool. You got the inside information on this one.
Oh, I do. We're making a lot of cheese balls over sixteen hundred or six, one thousand six hundred.
Can we get a motion for approval of consent items?
Motion.
Penrod, a second.
Second.
Mr. Orr, any discussion? Thank you for the donations, the grants and.
Absolutely.
We got a great community. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, Randy. Employment. Employment, we have, uh, several. Kenny Miller, MIS sixth grade boys' basketball coach. Crystal Nicum, uh, MIS sixth grade boys' basketball coach volunteer. Greg Jarrett, MIS sixth grade boys' basketball volunteer. Riley Schock, Manchester Junior Senior High Junior High Boys Basketball Coach. Madison Baker, MES, uh, special education paraprofessional. Um, Paige Smith, MES, Rise One-to-One Paraprofessional. Tyler Fagan, Manchester Junior Senior High Junior High Boys Basketball Coach. Eric Christensen, Junior Senior High Head High School Girls Tennis Coach. Greta Miller, uh, high school assistant tennis coach for girls. Isaiah Burlingame, a volunteer wrestling coach for the Junior Senior High. And Trus Scott Duffy, Junior Senior High Volunteer Wrestling Coach. Awesome. Thank you. Get a motion for approval of employment. Mr. Tobias, second. Mr. Penrod, any discussion? Welcome aboard, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero.
Uh, next we have a request for the Biddy Basketball League. It's pre-K through second grade. Helped with the Manchester High School Gymnasium. Um, it runs from, I always have to find the dates, uh, ends on January seventh. It's five weeks long, thirty dollars per player, checks, uh, the proceeds go to the Manchester Boys Basketball Program. Students get a shirt, they get basic skills and also playing time, scrimmage time. So that is the the Biddy Basketball League. That's pre-K through two.
Yeah, just do six-three as well.
And six-three is the Junior Squire Basketball League. Um, and that is for grades, uh, third grade through fifth grade. Uh, same concept. Um, that program begins November tenth. They'll practice on Mondays and Wednesdays from six-thirty to eight at MIS. Focus on fundamentals, enhance skills. Um, there are also opportunities to play some scrimmage games. Um, and that costs us thirty dollars and again, those proceeds go to the Manchester Boys Basketball Program.
Motion to approve both of these. Mr. Pierstos, a second. Mr. Penrod, any discussion?
On that second one, it mentions all games played through Club One. Why does Club One?
Let me get there.
Okay.
There's like one more. Is that the one in Fort Wayne?
Um, I, yeah, I believe Club One is located in Fort Wayne, Indiana.
Over by the mall.
Yeah, a block away.
So he's putting in additional time and I think splitting these grades up gives him more focus, right, with the different age of kids, so.
Well, they always have a great turnout. We always have tremendous turnout and participation.
Hit the last.
Builds builds the future.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You and I, Casey?
I'm an aye.
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 Five zero. The school calendar. I didn't hear half of the stuff about the school calendar this year as usual.
It's very similar to, uh, with with similar comparable dates to this year's calendar. The only exception is we're trying something different on, um, parent-teacher conferences. Those traditionally have been, um, a full, an eve, half-day evening and a full day the next day, uh, when everybody kind of leaves out for fall break. Um, so this year we are going to run a day and a half in in one day. So the teachers will come in the morning and run a day, have a break for, uh, you know, a mid-afternoon lunch and then run a half-day on the Thursday before fall break begins. Other than that, um, you know, we have our three waiver days that we utilize for professional development. Students attend one-seventy-seven, teachers are one, uh, one-eighty-three. We'll start teacher days on, uh, Monday, the tenth and eleventh and teach, uh, students' first day on the twelfth of August. Uh, and we end, you know, we have our week fall break, week, uh, spring break, two weeks at Christmas. Um, and then we end on the twenty-seventh, uh, with graduation on May twenty-eighth. Uh, and again, the those dates line up fairly, uh, close to the current calendar. Did have input from a staff and from, uh, a calendar committee with the association.
So they only get three, is it three PD days?
Three PD days, yeah, uh, on the, on a waiver.
What's the average for a school corporation?
Um, I think it varies, but you typically see anywhere from two to four, um, in a, if the districts I'm familiar with.
Yeah, it'd be cool if we could increase that in the future and do some little project work or something.
Tony, is there an effort made to coordinate our calendar with the other systems in the county? Yeah, all all the superintendents communicate. We send out, um, sample copies, uh, you know, tentative copies because we coordinate with Heartland as part of our bylaw, I mean, part of our, uh, board policy. We coordinate, so that way Mr. McWark knows kind of when everybody's looking at it. So, uh, we're lined up with Wabash and MSD for sure. Um, I believe North Miami is very similar. Prue might have a a couple of differences, but um, all the schools that go, we all share those calendars together.
Now, we got, we got some accolades at the Advisory Committee for Heartland because everyone else took winter break except us that day, and so the Manchester kids cooked all the food, so.
Ah, very good.
Worked out.
Very good.
Worked out good. So. Motion to approve the calendar?
I make a motion.
You got a what? Oh, you make the motion, second. Mr. Pierstos, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. CBA.
Collective bargaining agreement. We had our tentative, uh, agreement hearing last Thursday to discuss the, um, the language and and the the, uh, financial concepts within the collective bargaining agreement. Just to, it is a two-year agreement, just to give some of the highlights. Again, um, uh, roughly three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in raises. Again, it's a two-year agreement, uh, money into the VIBA, their VIBA account. Addition of a few, I think, three ECA positions, a total investment of three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, uh, into our teachers. And then just there were some added language throughout that we discussed at the tentative agreement. Changing some meal reimbursements, uh, adding in some language for grievances, things like that. But, um, those of you that were at the hearing heard that information and so I would recommend it's 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 been good working with the association to come to an agreement that, uh, we all agree is is fair and certainly I think for our teachers, well-deserved. They're they're the backbone of what we do for our kids. So I would ask that you would, uh, consider consider approval of the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-seven collective bargaining agreement with the Manchester Teacher Association.
Okay. Motion to approve. Mr. Penrod, a second. Mr. Pierstos, discussion?
I want to thank those that took the time to to work through that and I'm glad that our budget allows for increases for teachers. They deserve it and we we have to keep up with those school systems around us and throughout the state, so.
Yeah, a little triangle, points. I noticed with the foreign exchange students, one thing that pops up every year, right, is the is the friendly nature of the relationships with the teachers and they they tend to use that distance word, right? Where that's a professional thing over there or what, that kind of, you know, says something, right, I think, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Heartland update.
Well, just to, just two items I'd like to point out. Heartland's at just about at capacity. I think we're a little under six hundred, uh, students, which, uh, which is, speaks very highly of the program and programs involved there. Uh, the the other item I'd like to talk a little about is, in prior years, we, Heartland's always constructed a house. And and I don't know if any of you have had an opportunity to go out and during the open house. But one thing, I guess professionally, that always interests me, but one thing that that got me excited is, uh, young people with their parents, young people showing them specifically what work they had, uh, completed on that house and how excited they were. So that speaks highly. In the past year, we're now, uh, working with ABC Construction Prep Academy. They provide the instructors and and, uh, it's a more specific program. Young people can, uh, obtain training in framing, for example, or HVAC, very specific to become an electrician. Just heard on the news two days ago. Indiana in twenty-twenty-six will be a about a thousand, uh, construction jobs will go un- unfilled or or we're behind that much. So really, a pretty exciting program. It's fun to see how excited young people are. Uh, and and good instruction there as well.
Awesome. Thank you, Brad.
Well, well, uh, if you're partnering with ABC, will that apply to the start of an apprenticeship program?
I believe so, yes, yes. I I need to do a little more investigation and we need to run this program for for a year really to see how it it's going to pan out. But yes, I think those young people.
Really good.
Can go right into an apprentice program.
Why would I hope that would satisfy, whether it's their first year through their apprenticeship? I don't know what what that looks like.
That I don't know, but but I'm going to do a little more investigation into that. But I think it's, uh, we're, I think we're still going to build a house, but, uh, this is, this is a pretty exciting program.
We need to, we won't use the word steal or swipe, borrow, but they got a, you know, they did a little presentation on a a program that they have that tracks the students' work time. That, it's like a homegrown software program that one of their ex-students put together. That is one nice little system that they put together there, so.
Sure.
I s- I asked him, they said, oh, he's really busy, but pretty, pretty cool stuff going on there, so.
Well, well, and and one other side, I think, I think dur- during the, uh, the discussions in terms of the new contract, uh, in my observations here and my observations at Heartland, it it really is heartwarming to see adults working with children that are excited about what they're doing in life and that, and you can see that, so, good job.
Well, and back to their instructors as well. They get, you know, like John says, sometimes it's a godsend, the people they actually get to work with the the kids there and stuff. You gotta remember, like, Heartland, every other county's trying to mimic what we've had since the sixties, right? So Marshall County, so, you know, all, you know, Saint Joe County. Every one, every county in the state's basically building a CT center, Fort Wayne Diocese, right? A lot of them are are duplicating what we've got, so, awesome. Thank you. Legislative?
Nothing new. Um, obviously, we're still just reeling from SB one, so that'll continue to figure the effects of that. I think there's a new school rating, uh, system that they're getting ready to roll out. They kind of had some final drafts, I guess, for public comment and so forth, so uh, I think that came from latest legislation, so that will be interesting to see what their final, how they're going to do that. So it'll ramp up after the first year, legislation.
Was that the Allen County Bean Dinner last night, so banks didn't make it because they're opening up the government, right? So they're getting by that, but I thought if it went long enough, you know?
Anyway, I'll leave it at that, but thank you, Adam. Superintendent comments?
Yes, uh, just give some updates and, you know, we talked a little bit about PD and just kind of give you a glimpse into what we utilize those days for, uh, when we apply for those waivers. Uh, just a couple of highlights first. Uh, last, uh, two Saturdays ago, November first, uh, the Manchester Marching Band competed at the Indiana State Music Association Semi-State Marching Competition in Franklin, at Franklin Community High School. Um, and as one who was in tenant, in attendance, yelling my head off, um, I thought they did an outstanding do- job and I talked with Mr. Huber, the director, and he said they really walked away feeling good about their performance and feeling like they're really ready to springboard into next year and learned a lot and, uh, just gotten stronger. Um, so it's exciting to see them down at, some I say it again, they were there last year. For the first time, we think maybe in ever, uh, our our Squire cheerleaders headed to Newcastle uh, to compete in the Indiana Chair Championship, State Championship. They competed in what they call the timeout division. So some of the cheers that you would see when there's a timeout and they go out on the floor. Squad's been working really hard this year to get ready to compete. Uh, it's, it was new to them, uh, but they really left it out on the floor and and walked away feeling good about, you know, their first time. Number one, to qualify, uh, because not everybody qualified, so to qualify a state in your first year was an accomplishment in and of itself. Yesterday, we had our our PD day corporation-wide. Just want to break down some of the, there were various sessions throughout the day, uh, that our teachers attended. Uh, pre-K through grade three, attended the Ever-Changing Classroom and Trauma. Presentation was presented by Wabash Miami Area Program Staff. And the presentation focused on strategies to work with childrens of trauma or children that are in crisis. Grades four through eight, um, worked, uh, on their, they had checkpoints, conversations, checkpoints. And I-Learn is new. Um, uh, MIS modeled it last year or piloted it. Uh, seasonal assessment systems for teachers, I mean, for students in grade three through eight, designed to measure progress in English Language Arts and Math throughout the year. So instead of looking at one snapshot at the end of the year, uh, these these checkpoints check throughout the year. Um, and then that can drive instruction, uh, from teachers because they're able to see the results of those checkpoints and kind of know where students need to be reinforced, uh, need to be encouraged, need to grow. Um, and they tied that in with, um, IXL training. That was followed up the checkpoint conversation. IXL training, IXL provides diagnostic assessment that, uh, links with checkpoints and once it does, it automatically generates, uh, supporting material for students to utilize on targeted areas that that checkpoints indicates they need that additional, uh, work in. Uh, ninth through twelfth grade did a review of diploma redesign, um, and and course offerings and that was presented by, uh, Councilors Becca Wiley and Jody Metzger. Sue Janegi gave a pre-K twelve STEM certification update. It's time to renew corporation-wide our STEM certification and the process has changed significantly. Um, so Mrs. Janegi is staying on top of the documentation and things we need to do to make sure, uh, we're ready for recertification. Grades nine through twelve also, uh, talked about Albert Adaptive. It's used by the high school AP teachers. Adaptive is a new product line, so they were, they were introducing it and it supports, um, specific standard skill sets, um, by course, by course-specific. Then, uh, Mr. Penrod brought this up, but as soon as final guidance comes out on the new accountability model, they're going back to letter grades, uh, we'll be presenting that information, uh, in a future board meeting. They rolled out a a sample model, asked for public input, have rolled out a second model, made some tweaks. I believe that will be the, probably be the final model. I believe it's supposed to be approved in December. So once we get that and we can digest that a little bit, we will, um, present it to you guys so you understand that new accountability model. Be the first time that schools have received a letter grade in seven years in Indiana because they had taken that away at one point. And it's really.
Hey, can I get hooked up for the previews? Those previews that come out on Parent Square, for some reason, I don't get those while we're talking about that. Yeah, I get a bunch of other stuff, but not the previews. Yeah, without those little white cards around, I get lost, and there's a lot of activities, right? Like, they hit them even when they're out of town and stuff, but. As far as like STEM, so DOI, we, we got into that a little bit on the difficulties with staffing. Any, anything we're looking at with STEM, any difficulties in the future as far as staffing?
No, it's, I mean, really, it's, it's STEM integration, so it's integrating STEM across our curriculum and taking opportunities to, to embed those concepts, you know, across, across our curriculum. We already have STEM teachers, um, but it's, it's teachers that are, you know, day in and day out, finding those opportunities, whether it's through a project, through a, tying something with STEM into their current lesson, just to reinforce those skill sets that are so critical.
And then we, you know, when we went through the, the class this summer and we looked at some of the scheduling, you know, how the scheduling process is done, and then, then, like, you know, and so this new letter grade, do you have any, any idea where we fall on that letter grade system? Are we doing any advanced kind of look at that, or?
Well, I mean, we've been looking at it, but until the final model comes out. So, for example, uh, you know, if kids pass Language Arts or Math, right, which is what we traditionally have counted in I-Learn, I looked at the percentage of students passing. That's now going to extend to our Science and Social Studies, to our ACT, to our Biology Test, to our Attendance. So it's a, it's a more holistic approach to the letter grade, um, and it, it will make tracking even more critical. So once they come out with that final model, it will be sitting down with administration and with teachers and just making sure we have a plan that we're addressing, um, areas that meet, meet that criterion, but more importantly, in doing so, meet our students' needs and make sure that we're moving our students where they need to be, because that's really, in the end, what it's all about.
You know, and a dumb part to me is we come up with an attribute grading system, right? That we tell some students you're A and Bs, and we tell the other students you're C, D, and F. So to me, it's almost, you know, it can be a, a motivator, it can also be like a shaming thing, and sometimes, what is that Y equals F when it comes to intellectual attainment? Right? Like, some of it's genetics, some of it's the environment that we provide, a lot of it is the teachers, right? I mean, they're the ones interacting with the students every day, so we have these ra, letter grades, and you were talking like at checkpoints through here. I still cannot understand why people, why we can't take these students and we look at their grades, we're gonna do tests and quizzes, but look at those grades in a control four format, like a P chart, right, a percentage chart, and just look at where their baseline is and look if they're improving or declining. Why do we have to segregate them into like letter grades, and then you wanna do that to schools? So to me, like, I, I don't know, I, I sort of look at the world variable, and so that new system's, it's more robust is what it is, right? It has more indicators involved, more ratios, you know, different things like that, but, you know, I hope at some time we can, we can start to, you know, these kids, we ought to have a dashboard and a P chart with every one of these classes where you're just, where the, and the teachers ought to be the ones like having views of these, right? Not, you know, the admins are fine, but, you know, that deal in class and knowing that a lot of times the state is not available to the independent teachers, that's really where we need to be going with this stuff, but I know we don't control that, but I'm gonna say my piece tonight while, while we're doing this, maybe somebody will listen, so. But, I don't know, just don't like the grades.
One thing you may want to explain is what first letter grade is going to be for what school here?
Yep.
Yeah, what data?
Yeah, so, the, here's the, just kind of the timeline, in June was, there was the first draft presentation. In October, there was the second draft presentation of the state board, and then there was a public feedback, uh, period closed, uh, it's closing, it's coming up. I think next, I wanna say next Monday. December tenth, state board final vote on the model is expected. The twenty-five, twenty-six school year, so the school year that we're in, current year for which schools will be graded, the grade will be issued in the fall of twenty-six, November or December, and students will receive their first grades in seven years. So, Dr. Stevens and I discussed today, so they're grading us on this year without having a completed model until the middle of December. So, it, it is what it is, uh, you know, I'm not gonna change their mind, but when we get that final model, we're gonna discuss, and teachers and, are gonna discuss, and admin's gonna discuss, and we're gonna put our, our best foot forward and, and tackle it, you know, the best we can. But I just found the timing interesting, not surprising, but interesting.
Yep. Anything else?
Um, have we had any issues with Adam closing all the roads?
No, actually, Randy, you might, you might be able to talk this, but I, but. The question is, uh, have we had any concerns with Adam closing all the roads? Actually, I think it's, we've, we got so much information out, and Mr. Penrod kept, uh, Mr. Self in the loop.
So far, so far.
It's been good.
Everything has gone, actually, better, better than expected.
Yep.
With, with that one being closed, uh, now, and because, because we've done so well, um, there, we're gonna, we're gonna just see if we can now close the Market Street Bridge. South Market, uh, we're gonna close that one, uh, to see, to just add more challenge, um...
Taking suggestions for other roads we need to close, you know, might, might as well.
They're closing thirteen, uh, down in Urbana, I think sometime here soon.
Yep.
The colors, um, but, uh, but no, I've talked to, uh, I talked to Ryan Smith from the county, uh, Ryan's been, Ryan's been great, um, and, and you know, this is, these are people that are trying to coordinate, but these are, these bridges are coming from different pots of money that have been planned.
Yep.
The South Market Street, that was supposed to have been, uh, that was planned back in nineteen, um, and it's finally happening, and we don't say, no, we don't wanna do it, when the money comes through, because, you know, and it needs to be done. So that may close, I think, mid, whatever year, I'm hearing mid-December, maybe, who knows?
They don't know.
That's supposed to be six, six to nine months, I think, um, that one's coming completely out. We're working on our plans to be able to get buses around it, um...
State Road Thirteen North should be open by the end of this week.
Yeah, it's opening this week, and that's gonna help us.
Good.
You know, I think everyone's, everyone's doing the, doing the best they can, and I, I appreciate Adam's, Adam's been helping, and he said to be Jackson.
I think, yeah, I think with the communication that you guys have had, and then Mr. Self getting information out to our parents, I, I really, they've just adjusted, and I think people have realized they might need to leave a few minutes early. I think the, I think I timed it, and I think the, the light during the day adds about three to four minutes to your, you know, to your journey wherever you're heading, but, um, I've been out to the schools that pick up, uh, mainly MES, um, and it, it's, it's going without a hitch, people are making the adjustments.
Sure, good. I was, like, yesterday morning, I was thankful that we had a PD day, because I went to Elkhart, there are a lot of reading accidents.
Sure.
Morning, so, yep. Motion to adjourn? Mr. Penrod, second, Mr. Ohr, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you.